Kennedy, is there a different rate I should be reading with respect to this item?
Yes, thanks Mayor. When I prepared all the documents in the proposed contract, the what we were requesting council to do was to approve an extension for a year at a rate of $3.10 per MCF. That price was only good through last week if it was subject to change, which it was at the beginning of this week. I was notified by NOPEC that the price for the extension would go to $3.27 for MCF. I would still recommend that we approve that based on two points of interest. One, we get considerable funding through NOPEC for other projects that the city and the CIC do. If we would not have those gas contracts with NOPEC, there was a high probability we would not get those grants. And when we, when I looked with the NOPEC rep on the apples to apples comparative sheet on Tuesday, we're still considerably, the $3.27 is still considerably below the average rate right now for small business on a commercial side is about $4. So we're still considerably under that. So I still think it's a good deal. Gas prices are very volatile right now. Just got caught a little pinch. Our current rate that we paid for the prior year was $2.91 per MCF. So you can see it went up a little bit just in the past two or three weeks. But I still think it's a good bargain for the city and would recommend approval. I would ask that we get approved on emergency so I can get this filed before the price changes tomorrow.
Okay, very good. I will go ahead then for procedural reasons and I'll read the agenda item with the amended price. So item motion authorizing the mayor to extend and enter into contract for the city's natural gas contract with NOPEC for one year at the rate of $3.27 MCF. And we will incorporate Mr. Kennedy's remarks as his introductory remarks to this agenda item. Did you have anything further, Mr. Kennedy?
Uh, no, that's it, Mayor. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I said it's still, still think it's a good deal. NOPEC's a good, been a good partner all the way around for us. So we'd rather get it approved this evening so I can file it tomorrow morning.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any questions or comments? Uh, Mr. Gould, you have the floor.
Mr. Kennedy, could you please clarify something that you said in your emails to us regarding this issue, specifically regarding the ability of us to request an accommodation should the market lower the, the potential rate? What was, there was some indication that, that seemed to, to, to tell us that if the rate were to go down after we approved this, that we would be able to make application for that rate?
We can make application for their rate. It's subject to like rolling averages and a couple other issues, but it's considered to be a fixed rate until we, we would renegotiate the contract and perhaps extend it at some point during the first year or a second year at a different price.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Thank you, Mr. Gould. Any further questions or comments? If there are none, is there a motion to authorize the mayor to enter and extend the contract for the rate of $3.27 MCF with NOPEC?
So moved.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Erdl. There's a motion by Mr. Erdl. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Weiss. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Blankfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardie?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Okay, just, just, just before I move on, Mr. McConville, this is a point of order. I, I do recall now that Mr. Kennedy said something about passing this on emergency, but this is a motion and an ordinance, so I don't believe we had to do that, but I just wanted to double check that before we move on.
Correct.
So, so Mr. Kennedy can go ahead and, and we can go ahead and get this contract entered tomorrow. Very good. Okay, very good. Well, then the motion carries and thank you, Mr. McConville. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, and we will proceed accordingly. All right. Next item is item H, ordinance 2020-40, amending the authorized permanent appropriations for current and other expenditures of the City of University Heights, Ohio, for the period commencing January 1, 2020 and ending December 31, 2020 and declaring an emergency. Mr. Kennedy?
I think you're going, Mayor. This is just a general catch-up appropriation ordinance for the middle of the year. There's a number of items that, that we are requesting changes to. I'll briefly run through those. Right now, there's some small internal changes to the general fund. We're adding $2,500 for the appropriation for Shaker Court expenses, adding $22,000 for prisoner housing expenses that's paid to the City of Solon. We're decreasing the salary appropriation for the building departments offset that. So the total of $24,500 is being added to those two specific cost will be offset by the reduction of building departments. So there's building departments. So there's a net effect of zero on the general fund.
So it's a wash?
Yes, complete wash.
Okay.
For the sewer maintenance fund, we, in August, literally on the last day of August, we received a check from the Cleveland Water Department, $298,360.30 for the project that was previously approved on Laurelhurst Road, I believe that's a Fabrizi construction project. The city had owed the Cleveland Water Department $110,071.85 as a result of a final reconciliation of the project from 2018, 2019 for Groveland, Washington Water Maines. I did put a placeholder in the appropriations at the beginning of the year for $255,000 based on some discussions with Mr. Chuni. So I'm making a request here to adjust the appropriations in the sewer water maintenance fund by 153,500 to allow for encumbering for all the project expenses for Laurelhurst and to give us the fund balance to pay the Cleveland Water Department the amount that was the, that we owe them as a result of the final reconciliation. And I'm sure that Mr. Chuni can give you any kind of details on that. Once we're done with this, I'm also requesting to approve an appropriation increase of $34,000 in 2020 to cover all the projected street lighting expense through the end of this year. Those assessments that were approved last year by council and that we renewed for next year, as I said, we'll be getting those by the end of the month. So that'll give us the necessary fund balance to support the increase in appropriations. What I'm trying to do is get all the 2020 expenses paid for with 2020 money as opposed to do what the city has done traditionally in the past, which is basically to stop paying bills in November and December and then paying prior year expense out of current year budget. So I want to tie everything up this year. The fire pension fund, we need an increase there in $11,200 to support charges that we expect to be posted against that fund prior to the end of this year. Again, we'll be getting second half settlement monies for the fire pension fund before the end of the month. So that'll give us the fund balance to support that appropriation. We also established when council approved the acceptance of the CARES Act funding, we set up a separate fund. It's Fund 297, which is titled the Local Coronavirus Relief Fund. We have received $465,644 in federal funding for CARES. Thus far, we're on track to get an additional assessment of monies that'll be distributed by Cuyahoga County. So what I'm looking to do here is to set up an appropriation, $350,000 in that fund. That's split between $75,000 of estimated salary expense, $275,000 in other expenses. What I can do then is charge off the items that previously have hit either the general fund or some special revenue funds, but they were direct COVID-related expense and will move those expenses against the new coronavirus relief fund. That'll then restore those appropriation and, and fund balance levels in the general fund, which will improve our position a little bit. And we're still waiting, been working with Luke and some of his folks. We hope to get finalized a directive to, to give us some kind of guidance on what charges are going to be allowed to be offset in that fund that were previously accounted for in either the general fund or another special revenue fund. And lastly, looking to improve, to increase the capital improvement fund appropriations by $211,390. In 2019, there were two shared projects with the City of Cleveland Heights. One managed by University Heights, the other by Cleveland Heights. The net difference of that projects that, that we owed Cleveland Heights was $104,000 roughly. That was approved by council to be paid to Cleveland Heights in April. After discussing how the accounting went with the way it was managed in 2019, discussed the accounting with the auditors, I'm recommending that we book the projects as gross. So we would record the gross cost of the project in the capital fund, offset that by the revenue that was paid us by Cleveland Heights. So in order to do that, I would need to increase the appropriations for a book entry by $2,000, $203,161. As I said, we did record the net revenue of $99,150 to the capital improvement fund. In addition to that project allocation and going back with the auditors from 2019, there's $8,229 prior year expenses that were charged incorrectly at some point during the year in 2019. So I'm going to need to make a budget adjustment for that, 8229 in 2020 to bring that up to speed. So those are the individual components that are included on attachment. A, the net appropriation increase for all funds is $760,090, which is supported by the additional cash we received from both the CARES distributions and Cleveland Water. That total was a little over $764,000. I sent the information on to Mrs. Weiss in August and discussed some of the need for that. So be happy to answer any questions anybody has related to these adjustments.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Are there any questions? Mr. Rock?
Yes, Mayor. Um, Mr. Kennedy, do you remember offhand what, what are we down right now in terms of rate of collection for the year from last year at this time?
We're down from last year approximately $300,000 right now, but we're also down the expected growth that we have protected for the year. So it's about $550,000 total. But strictly for the year, it's about 300.
Is what we're down from at this point last year?
Correct.
And we're potentially going to be bringing in 700, what was it, 760 in CARES money?
And the money from the Cleveland Water Department.
Oh, yeah. Okay, okay. That's all I needed to know. Thanks.
And when do you expect to get some guidance on the use of those funds?
Um, I've been working with Mr. McConville and associate in his firm. We've taken all the guidance that's been disseminated from the Treasury, the Federal Treasury Department, and anything we've received from the state county or state auditors. So we, we hope to identify some parameters on how we can use those monies probably within the next week or so. The real issue is what we can charge off in terms of salary expenses. I think some of the hard charges that we've incurred to date for materials and supplies, building or facility improvements that were necessary because of COVID, those are all pretty much cut and dry, but the, the area that I need the assistance from in terms of interpretation will probably be available from Luke sometime in the next week or so.
My anticipate it'll be a little sooner than that, Dennis. We are working through a draft opinion. And I think we will have it out, if not by the end of the week, then the beginning of next week at the latest.
I think we'd all appreciate being updated on that. That's a big one. Appreciate your work on that.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Rock, did you have anything further? Okay, very good. Any other questions for Mr. Kennedy? There are none. Is there a, is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2020-41 on emergency?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to adopt that ordinance on emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Rock. Motion to adopt on emergency by Mr. Rock. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
Second by Mrs. Blankfeld. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we'll take two votes. Take the, will you take the roll on the, on the suspension of the rules?
Mrs. Blankfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardie?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Very good. And on the main motion?
Mrs. Blankfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardie?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss? Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Very good. Ordinance 2020-41 is adopted. Uh, next is item J, ordinance 2020-42, advance of funds from the ODNR Fund 242 to the General Fund 100 and declaring an emergency. Mr. Kennedy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is an advance back from Fund 242, Ohio Department of Natural Resource Fund, which was used as part of the Park Improvement Fund. There was originally monies advanced from the general fund to get the project going. So those monies are due back to the general fund. We had budgeted $40,000 to be advanced back this year. That was noted in, in ordinance approving those advances in prior years that I came across. I still have a remaining amount of about $27,000, $28,000, which was originally advanced from the general fund. So hopefully by the end of the year and based on the outcome of the 19 audit and what the auditors have determined, I'll be able to come back to council prior to year end and move the balance of that money back into the general fund. So as for right now, I'm just proposing to advance $40,000 back from the ODNR fund to the general fund.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Uh, any questions for Mr. Kennedy on this ordinance? Mr. Eric, excuse me, Mrs. Weiss?
You know, it's more a comment. I mean, I've been on council for almost six years and probably sat on meetings before, before that. And we have never had such a impressive finance director that has, you know, interpreted information like this and, and related over appropriately. And I just want to commend the finance director.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss.
Thank you.
Hardly agree. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments at this time? Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2020-42 on emergency?
Go moved.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Erdl. We have a motion by Mr. Erdl to adopt 2020-42 on emergency. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If there are?
I don't know if this is a discussion point, but did we skip 41?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think.
Yeah.
We had 41 after this.
I guess we could vote this and then.
I did. I did go out of order. I, I.
And then return to 41.
I'm sorry, Mr.?
We can vote this and then return to 41.
Okay, very good. You know what? I was writing notes in the margin and somehow I, okay, thank you, Mrs. Weiss for bringing it in. Okay.
It was a class director, not me.
Oh, okay. Very good. Well, thank you, Mr. McConville. All right. Well, then, uh, item J is before us. We will get back to item H or item I, excuse me, shortly. We do have a motion in a second. Uh, is, if there's no further discussion, we'll take two votes. Mrs. Thomas, will you take the roll on the suspension of the rule?
Mrs. Blankfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardie?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Very good. And on the main motion?
Mrs. Blankfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardie?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Uh, ordinance passed. We now will now address item I, ordinance 2020-41, authorizing the transfer of funds from the General Fund 100 to the Payroll Stabilization Fund 299 and declaring an emergency. Mr. Kennedy, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, at the beginning of the year, we set up a new fund to protect the city over the course of the next 11 years. As everybody knows, we had considerable discussion about the fact that this was the year where an extra or 27th pay would hit. And I had proposed setting up annual transfers to this fund, which is permitted by state law to support any of that expense. So that 11 years from now, you can just record that last payroll against this fund. It won't impact your general fund. It won't impact the budgeting process. We won't have to make accommodations as we had to this year because we did not have that money set aside. So this is an initial transfer amount of roughly $13,000. That was a small amount that we put in the budget. Talked to Mrs. Weiss and she said to go ahead and put it on. Just so council knows, probably in future years, the transfer will be more along the lines of $40,000 per year. But this will at least get some money in that fund. It's a special revenue fund, can't be spent for any other purpose. So this is just basically setting this money in escrow or in separate deposit to protect the city and to give it the funding to pay that extra payroll in the future.
Hey, very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Alexa officials, different groups thanking us for our actions this evening. 11 years from now. Any questions for Mr. Kennedy?
No, just to echo what Mrs. Weiss said, and we've all said at one point or another, Mr. Kennedy, your, your forward thinking is always greatly appreciated. Things like this will make things so much easier at, at points in time when coming up with that enormous payroll amount at the end of the year would be a burden for, for future administration. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Blankfield. Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion to adopt on emergency?
I'll make the motion on emergency, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Pardie. We have a motion to adopt 2020-41 on emergency by Mrs. Pardie. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Blankfeld. Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we'll take two votes. First is on the suspension of the rules. Will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Blankfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardie?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss? Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
And on the main motion?
Mrs. Blankfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardie?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries. Ordinance is adopted. And next is item K. Ordinance 2020-43, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for the transfer and disposal of solid waste services and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mayor. For many years, the City of University Heights has contracted with or participated with Cuyahoga County Solid Waste District on their East Side Support Consortium for the transfer and disposal of solid waste and recyclables. This first ordinance has to do with our solid waste portion of that. The East Side Consortium went out for bids on June 26th of 2020 and received four bids from Kimball, Republic, Rumkey, and Waste Management. The results of that bid were a little mixed because they separated the solid waste from the recycling, the recycling in two different methods, blue bags or not blue bags, and the solid waste either done with recycling with the same firm or separated with one company doing the recycling, one company doing the solid waste. For the City of University Heights, the end result of that process was to separate, have the solid waste disposal and landfilling done by one company, which would be BFI, which is the lowest and best bidder for that process, and then the recycling done by Kimball. Currently, our contract expires at the end of this month, the 30th. So we have to make, make a decision on this. It had gone to our Service and Utilities Committee on Monday, August 17th for review of these bids and some discussion about what we should do with recycling and other things in the future. The outcome of that process has been to recommend award to BFI, Browning Ferris Industries of Ohio for disposal of our solid waste and transfer of that solid waste to a landfill. And that is my recommendation that we accept this ordinance and authorize the mayor to enter, enter into a contract with BFI.
Okay, very.
If I could interject with, with council, we've had quite a bit of negotiation of this agreement back and forth between myself and, and their legal counsel. And there is one additional paragraph that we've gone back and forth on, on several occasions and they just gave, gave us a version back today that adds one paragraph that's been the subject of negotiation. I just want to read it into the record and talk about it briefly. It's titled Title to Waste, and it reads, contractor shall acquire title to solid waste when delivered to the disposal facility. Title to and liability for any unacceptable waste shall at no time pass to contractor, but shall remain with the generator of the unacceptable waste. There's, I guess, two noteworthy points there. One is they're reserving the right to bring something back to us that they picked up before they delivered it to the disposal facility. And then the second is that, that they are indicating that they will not accept title to any unacceptable waste, which is a defined term and essentially includes hazardous chemicals, flammable, radioactive materials and other types of materials that are governed by environmental laws in terms of their disposal. And we finally settled on this language because I did not want anything in the contract to indicate that the city was acknowledging ever having title to an unacceptable waste. So, you know, in, in talking with Mr. Pecorni, we don't really know when we pick trash up in people's backyards, what they're putting in their, in their trash bags. I mean, you know, we, we take the bags and we deliver them. We don't examine the bags or their contents. So we can never really be exactly sure what's in there, but I did want to make it apparent that there was not ever any acknowledgement that we, the city, were accepting title to unacceptable waste. And that's the back and forth that occurred with respect to that provision.
So, Mr. McConville, this is common enough occurrence for them that they felt this was necessary language in the contract?
Yeah, well, you know, this is truly a lawyer's issue. I think, you know, when I talked to Mr.
Yeah, well, you know, this is truly a lawyer's issue. I think, you know, when I talked to Mr. Pecorni about it and and asked him how often has this come up? The response was, well, it doesn't. You know, this, we've not dealt with this issue before, so.
But it may be with other communities and therefore they're doing it more broadly?
Well, they have legal counsel who's who's trying to protect their interests, and I understand that. They're in the same position we are. They don't know exactly what it is that's in the
Right.
trash bags that are that they're picking up and delivering, so.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you. Mrs. Weiss, it looks like you were raising your hand.
Yeah, thank you. Just a question for the law director. I just wanted to make sure that nothing else changed in the contract since I read it. Specifically that there's a clause, since we have a series of service committee meetings coming up regarding a garbage study, that if we needed to cancel the contract, we give, you know, we can give notice and that's fine.
That's correct. That remains in the contract. That was one of our comments added to the original draft. That remains in the contract.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McConville. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Any other questions?
Mr. McConville?
Yes, Mr. Gould, go ahead.
What is the procedure that's set forth about identification of the unacceptable waste? The period of time for detection once delivered to the transfer site? And the the method to identify that it's ours? So it's it seems like they're allowing a period of time where we would drop off our trash there, and then later on, they would say, oh, by the way, we found this. And then say that it came from us. Is that what I'm understanding from this addition?
Well, no, I I think that once they've delivered it, once they've delivered it to the disposal site, they've acknowledged title.
And is that in the section that you've amended?
Correct.
Okay.
So, yeah, so once they've delivered it, it's it's done. It's over with. It would be in transit that they would have this realization.
In transit from where?
Well, from from the city to the disposal site.
But aren't we transporting it from the city to the disposal site?
We are.
So I guess, Mr. Pecorni, I I maybe this goes down to the practicality that was highlighted by Mr. McConville, but there's a box, a C four, that somebody decides to dispose of with their trash, and that gets brought down by in in a, you know, black trash bag from University Heights to the transfer center. At what point are they identifying this as unacceptable waste and returning it to us?
They would have to identify it once we open the back of our truck and push that waste out onto their their floor, where they then load it into other semi-trucks for transport to their landfill facility. So they would have to identify it in that short period of transferring between the time we dump our truck and we leave.
Yeah, and there's and there's nothing in the contract that indicates that we have to take it back. And and that's what changed.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I I do admit, and you know, Mr. Gould's point, the 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 interesting thing here is is is, you know, what will they actually do to to examine what we are bringing? And what would be their procedure for rejecting it? And and perhaps it's not our problem unless they find something they want to reject.
Yeah, and then it is our problem, but I think it's our problem from the moment we picked it up, you know. So the bag of plutonium that the guys have picked up that that is rejected. We'll have to work a solution to that. Hazardous chemicals, I mean, you know. Yes, it could happen. Someone's you know, C four, as as Mr. Gould indicated. And and it could be discovered, and then we would, you know, prior to their acceptance, and then we would have to figure out what to do with it. Once they've accepted it, they're they're saying they don't have title to it, and that's fine, but there's nothing in here that allows them to give it back to us. That's
That's been changed in the contract?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, all right. Very good. Are there any further questions about this item? Not. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty dash forty-three on emergency?
I'm moved, Mayor.
Very good. We have a motion. We have a motion by Mr. Rock to adopt an emergency. Is there a second?
A second.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Purdy. Second by Mrs. Purdy. Any discussion? Being none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll on the suspension of the rules.
Mrs. Blankfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Purdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Very good. And then on the main motion.
Mrs. Blankfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Berry?
Aye.
Mrs. Purdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries. The ordinance is adopted. Before I proceed, I I want to apologize for my distraction here this the last couple of moments. You may have noticed that that Chief Perko has not been with us on the on the Zoom call this evening. Reason for that is is that University Heights Fire Crews are battling a house fire in Cleveland Heights, along with Shake and South Euclid Fire Crews. It's in the area of Lee Road near the library, and I did just hear from Chief Perko that he will be able to join us. It sounds like he'll be able to join us in time for his items coming up in the meeting, but our thoughts certainly go out to the folks affected by that fire. All right, very good. Next is item M. Item L was withdrawn because a motion was not needed, given the passage of an ordinance. Next is item M, ordinance twenty twenty dash forty-four, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for recycling processing services between University Heights and Kimball Company and declaring an emergency. Mr. Pecorni, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you again, Mayor. This again is an item that was bid through the Cuyahoga County Solid Waste District as part of the East Side Consortium, and it's for the transfer and processing of recycled materials. The agreement that we had previously expires at the end of this month on the thirtieth, and the bids were taken June twenty-sixth by the consortium. And the lowest bidder for bagged, blue bag recycling was Kimball. And I'm recommending that we authorize the mayor to enter into agreement with Kimball for processing our recycled materials.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Pecorni. Is there any discussion on this matter, Mrs. Weiss?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And so I just want to reiterate, but on the record, what I stated in the committee meeting. This this agreement is actually going to cost the city money. It's going to cost about sixteen thousand dollars. This is coming at a time where the city is in pretty dire budget constraints at this point, not just for two thousand twenty, but going into two thousand twenty-one. Sixteen thousand dollars is a vehicle. Sixteen thousand dollars is somebody's benefits. It could even be a part-time employee. And I am not for paying for recycling. When you don't have a demand, that means, you know, the the demand is going to, the demand is low right now, and it's going to bottom out at a certain point, and then demand's going to come back up. I mean, that's just how economics works. I'm also concerned, as has been highlighted in the city of Cleveland, is the recycling actually going to be recycled? This is not just an issue for the city of Cleveland, but for other cities, you know, as well. And until that gets cleared up, that's another reason. I'm not the main reason, but another reason why I I'm not for this. And this can always be started up when recycling numbers come back up and we can start, you know, not having to pay. I'm fine even if it were break even, but to actually pay for this, especially in the crisis that we're that we're in right now, I I will not be voting for this.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Mr. Gould?
I would like to to echo Vice Mayor Weiss's sentiments. I'm deeply concerned about the expenditures for the continuation of the recycling program in its current form, which is why I endeavor to find a middle ground between ending all recycling in University Heights and continuing at this very high rate. As Mr. Pecorni highlighted, the city pays a premium for continuing to do its recycling in blue bags. But really, there's not a mechanism right now for curbside recycling that's loose. And there was a middle ground opportunity, which would have allowed our citizens to bring their recycled goods to the service center in loose form, which would have resulted in us paying a lower rate. I understand the concerns of my colleagues that that may have lowered the rates of recycling to in some respect. But I think that those who felt strongly about continuing recycling would at least have been given an option that way without costing the city as much money. I also went back to the draft recycling study, recycled goods study that we had. And I had the opportunity to review the amounts of that we have for the individuals in our service department who are conducting the trash pickup and recycling pickup. And so I also wanted to highlight an additional cost savings looking at the amount that we currently have or use for these these products, one of the or for these services. One of the things that I asked in one of our draft reports was to break out the manpower that's used to do the recycling versus the rubbish collection, and and that's demonstrated here in the middle column, two thousand eighteen. So doing away with the curbside recycling had the potential, not only money from using the blue bags, but also one full-time service employee position who could be allocated elsewhere. So I shared that to the screen. This is question five. And and from the draft report that we sent out to the service committee. And so I I too will not be supporting this option because I think that it's fiscally irresponsible. And I was disappointed at the position that my colleagues took regarding this at the service committee meeting. And so I had to examine for myself. You know, I have this view that we can't keep spending like this in University Heights. We can't have everything we want. And if I'm asking my colleagues to to make a very tough decision around recycling, and they're unwilling to do that, then I need to focus inward on my own views at the things that I want and want to spend money on. And and for me, one of those things has been backyard trash pickup. I want to maintain that program. It's a very expensive program. And that's why after our service committee meeting with the anticipation that my colleagues were going to continue this spending on recycling, I asked the mayor to endeavor to find options to end backyard recycling, or excuse me, backyard trash pickup, which may allow individuals who want to maintain that ability to pay for that on a monthly basis if they don't qualify otherwise for ADA pickup. Because I think that we're going to have to make difficult decisions in the city regarding the services that we have and the expenditures that we're making. And I'll state publicly that although I'm not excited about the potential of ending backyard trash pickups, that we can continue programs that are otherwise potentially eliminaable or have the potential to be eliminated, but are expensive, that I I am willing to compromise and I am willing to find solutions that will save our citizens money and hopefully give citizens who want to maintain those options, those those services, the option to do so. So thank you so much for listening to me and and my position on this, and thank you, Mayor, for for the opportunity to speak.
Very good. Thank you. Mrs. Blankfield, I see you're raising your hand. You may have the floor.
This is a tough one. I'm very much a proponent of recycling. It's it's disturbing to me to think that so much of what we produce, this country especially, is going to end in landfills. However, as Mr. Gould so eloquently put it, and and Mrs. Weiss began the the conversation with, we are in a position financially where we have to make decisions that those monies have to be spent elsewhere. It's not a matter of, well, maybe. It's it's it may be someone's salary. It may be someone's benefit. Again, you know, hopefully from my lips to God's ear, we're going to come to a time where there is more of a demand for recyclable materials, and we can revisit this and and pick it pick it up again and and have a healthy and robust recycling program. But right now, to spend money to pay to have it taken, and we don't even recycle as robustly as other communities. I I can't vote for this. I'm sorry to say it, but I can't.
Thank you, Mrs. Blankfield. Mrs. Purdy, I saw you raise your hand.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I have to say, no one is happier than I that we have a council that is watching the pennies so closely because we have not always had that, and I appreciate that. We provided a lot of latitude to our new mayor when he came in to do a lot of spending. And now this council is actually standing up and reining in. And I'm speaking of the older members, not the newer members. So I think that is wonderful, and I think we must do that, and it is important to focus on the bottom line. But we have the entire budget to look for savings, not just to frighten people about backyard trash pickup if we continue to use recycling and pay for recycling. Sixteen thousand dollars is probably less than point one percent of the city's budget. So my position is, this is of value. We have a value. We believe in this. I believe in this because it has to start somewhere. There is an argument for saving, and it is important to save right now. But we also are providing services, as you've pointed out, because the city isn't a business. This isn't a business. This is about service. And if our values are about recycling and trying to spur every little bit to save this world because of the climate change and the dire possibilities for the future, sixteen thousand dollars does not seem to me to be the the place to really start to rein in. And I know we want to look at every piece of budget that we have. But again, this is a value situation, and I support I support recycling, even though we have to pay for it because I think the value of the city is to do this, is to go ahead and put these items out for potential reuse and try to do what little bit we can in terms of the future of the planet, basically. in terms of the future of the planet, basically. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Purdy. Uh, Mr. Rock, I think I saw you next. Go ahead.
Yes, I want to echo my colleague, Councilwoman Purdy's points. Um, we, we discussed this at length in the committee meeting. And I am of the firm belief that if we end this program because of sixteen thousand dollars today, when we don't know what the market price is going to be of recyclable goods next year or the year after, it's gonna be really hard to re-institute, reinstitute that program. Um, if we eliminate the recycling program in its entirety, there's still a cost to remove the rubbish because those pop cans, those, everything that you're recycling is gonna now go in our landfill and there's still a cost to that. And the delta that we explored really wasn't that much between throwing it away and recycling it. Now, this is the Heights. It's a progressive community. To go back and tell your constituents that hmm, we're gonna get rid of a recycling program, it's not gonna go very well. Yes, we're gonna save some money, but you know what? You know, we're, we are a government entity and it's about doing what's right and what's doing right for the environment, for our planet. And, you know, if there were no regulations whatsoever, yeah, things could be done quicker and cheaper. But that's not what's right. What's right here is doing what we have been doing. And again, this is a market price of recyclable goods that is not marketable right now. Um, it can be in a few years. We don't know. Um, we used to get paid for recycling up until last year. You know, we have um, you know, a trade war happening, you know, China's not buying our recyclables. We, we don't know what, who, who's gonna even be president next year. That all could change. And to unlearn a program and to just go back and have to relearn it a year later or two years later, I just think is silly. And again, it, it, it is not a lot of money. I don't know what we spend a year in trash. We've looked at so many different figures, but in the grand scheme of things, it, it, it was so silly. I don't know why we would even get rid of a program like that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rock. I, I, I know, Mr. Erdel, you'd raised your hand. Uh, did you still want to speak?
Yes, please.
Mr. Erdel.
Thank you. Um, first off, I'd like to say that I respect uh, the opinions of everybody here. Uh, and I'll be brief. Um, I also respect uh, Mr. Pecorni and his abilities and, and uh, uh, you know, his decision-making when it comes to the service of our uh, community. And um, um, also, uh, maybe it's, um, I, I don't think sixteen thousand dollars is too much to ask for a recycling program personally. And, and, and perhaps it's a matter of, maybe that we look at it this way. Um, you know, do we as council people make decisions based on, you know, what we think is best for the city? Or, or perhaps do we um, uh, take advice from all of our residents? And if there's an overwhelming opinion about an issue, we follow that. And uh, I believe that um, there will be an overwhelming um, uh, outpouring of um, comments and, and discussion from our residents if we, if we stop this program for sixteen thousand dollars. So there you go.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Erdel. You have the floor.
With all due respect to my colleagues, and I do mean that, um, I, I don't think it's silly. I think that it's been evidenced by the study and, and Mr. Pecorni has told us repeatedly how extraordinarily little this community cares about recycling and that's evidenced by how little they recycle. Um, I'm, I am a, you know, dyed-in-the-wool environmentalist kind of person. Um, and I don't think, I, I certainly believe that our residents are bright enough to relearn how to recycle should the financial cult, you know, climate in this country change. And we should be lucky enough to actually have recyclables be worth anything to anyone. Um, I'm aware of how many landfills close every single day because so much is going to them. And, and I find it heartbreaking. Um, however, I, I, I think they're bright enough to relearn how to recycle in a year or two, from my lips to God's ear, that we should be able to actually be paid for recycling again. Um, but we're not even recycling that much. And to have to shell out money for the little that we do, I think it's money we could better spend elsewhere now. I'm not saying end recycling forever in the city of University Heights. I'm, I'm not going to be that arrogant. Um, I certainly think though, that at the present time and in this circumstance, it may be something that we, we should consider.
Well, I will argue that we are recycling. It's just that some of our recyclables do end up in the trash because when the two bins in the front of the Kubota are filled, sorry, that's my dog. When the two bins in the front of the Kubota are filled, the rest goes in the trash. So it's not without a good effort, but sometimes without the person.
Right. And I hear what you're saying. However, you know, we've, we've seen that compared to other communities, statistically, we recycle much, much, much less. That, that's, that's not something you can argue. Um, it's a fact. And I think, I think it would be wonderful if when the time comes again, that maybe we can find a way to get our residents actually behind recycling in a, in a really robust way.
And I just want to say, you know, one other thing. The committee did have a, did have a middle ground.
Yeah.
But only a couple of us were, were willing, willing to do that. And that, that was have your loose recyclables um, brought to this, brought to City Hall. And I was willing, you know, to, to spend a few thousand dollars on that. I do not think that twenty thousand dollars is insignificant. Every twenty thousand dollars, five, 10 times over is real money, is real positions. And, you know, we're talking about a budget for 2021 that is not gonna be easy. And, you know, again, I said that twenty thousand dollars is a part-time employee or somebody's benefits. So that is not insignificant.
Or a vehicle for the police department.
So, you know, I just, there is a middle ground, but nobody wanted to, there wasn't a majority that wanted to discuss that middle ground further.
Yeah, no, no.
To suggest the middle ground is problematic because the city limits our time going up to City Hall.
That's not true. The service director said that it's open 24 hours a day in the back of the building.
Uh, the service director suggested that it was not a good idea, that they were not set up to do that.
That's right. That was what it was. Thank you, Phil. It was the, the trucks and all. But um, regardless, I'm willing to make the motion to pass this on emergency.
I'll second.
Uh, Mayor, was this on emergency or is this?
Well, this is listed on emergency and.
So I'll make the motion on emergency.
Okay. Um, I would also note that there was an agenda item where we could just do it by motion. Uh, but we could start with what's on the agenda, you know. Now, this is the agenda item that we put forth. So we have a motion um, by Mrs. Purdy to approve ordinance um, uh, 202044 on emergency. Is there a second?
Mr. Rock.
I second it.
Is there a discussion? Okay. Well, before we proceed, uh, I, I didn't say anything and, and I feel like I, I should, you know, for the record. I may have said a few things in committee. I know, I said a few things uh, in advance of this, I referred this matter into committee, had Mr. Pecorni bring it to the committee's attention um, well before today's meeting because I knew that there could be a diversity of opinion on this. And, and, and we had a very thoughtful discussion, I thought, in committee. So I, I wanna start from that point that, that, that um, it's, it's difficult to know what the right answer here is, is because there, there are some competing interests and things that, that we do need to consider. I do want to clear up a few things, though. There was a suggestion that uh, in the city of Cleveland, you know, whether or not they're recycling. Well, they're not recycling because they're, they're not under a contract to, to do so. They have not made a decision to do what we are considering doing here, which is to actually pay to recycle at the rate of ninety-six dollars a ton. Uh, whereas before we, we were paid to provide recycling, we, we were paid a grand total of four hundred dollars last year. But nevertheless, we were paid as opposed to paying to recycle. And, and that is a, that is a bitter pill to swallow. Um, in the long run, I want to believe that recycling markets will improve and that industry will develop such to, to use our recycling, recyclable materials again. You know, since China is not using our materials uh, the way they once did. And that uh, we, we will reach again, a, a time and a, when material will be valuable enough that it will not be cheaper to landfill the materials, which it would be. I mean, one could make the individual choice, even if we recycle, that if you would rather throw away that aluminum can, if you'd rather throw away that bottle, you could. Uh, I mean, I, I suppose you could do that now. And, and I think people do do that now, is reflected by the recycling numbers. I do know that, that there, you know, historically, University Heights on recycling lags behind other communities. Part of that's because of the Blue Bag Program. Part of that is, as Mr. Pecorni could, could tell you, has to do with the, the, the times at which communities weigh what is recycled versus when we weigh what is recycled. And some of the other communities' numbers may actually be inflated. But that's neither here nor there for this discussion. Um, I, I, I do want to say that if you're a proponent of recycling, sixteen thousand dollars is not too much to pay. Uh, I, I want to say that, 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 that years of encouraging recycling and recycling habits would be lost by ending recycling and, and that habits and practices will have to be relearned and reinstituted. Of course, we can learn again. But, but to be a good steward of the planet, even, even having to pay as opposed to being paid for recycling, I, I think that is still a value that, that this community has and, and should uh, be reflected here i- i- in our vote here in city government. I think we should lead on this issue. I mean, Richmond Heights did do away with their recycling program. Um, I'd rather not go that route if, if we don't have to. And we don't have to. And while we could do the, the drop-off program, you, you know, the thing is, is we don't have a lot of space here for that. Um, even if we do let people come here uh, 24 hours a day. Uh, if you ride out in Georgia County, you, you can see in, in various townships and other areas where they have large pendant areas with all kinds of different containers where residents may roll up and sort and, and put items in. We don't have space for that here. This is, this is not that kind of community. We don't have uh, an, an area that we ought to, that we could dedicate to append an area like that. And, and, and we have thirteen thousand people that would try to go through there from time to time. Um, okay, not everybody would do it, but, 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 and, and probably fewer would. Our recycling numbers would surely go down if it was something that we had to deliver, residents had to deliver themselves rather than pick up. And I think we would have an incredible amount of blowback from our residents if they weren't able to do recycling at their home anymore. And, and with that, you, you know, I'm not gonna say that sixteen thousand is or isn't real money. Though, you know, we're, we're talking about thirty-two thousand, four hundred dollars over the next two years. But also over the next two years, we're gonna spend an extra eight hundred thousand dollars doing backup backyard pickup. When if we had a, a contract like South Euclid did with Kimball, we could be spending less than fifteen dollars per house uh, per month um, for, for, for solid waste and recycling pickup. And, and we'd be saving that four hundred as well as the, the, you know, the money we're looking to spend here. So, so there are other decisions we could be making that would be saving a lot more money than, 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 than this seeming drop in the bucket. Um, I mean, you, you know, I, I, I think a lend price, a lane price, you know, pennies turn into pounds, you know. And, and the thing is, is that small amounts do accumulate, you know, and I do appreciate that. But I think if you support recycling, if you want to be a good steward of the planet, we find a way to spend the sixteen thousand bucks this year to do this. Uh, as it is, uh, our, our, the solid waste rate is gonna go down from forty-one ninety to forty. And, and there's gonna be some savings there. And uh, you know, if, if, if you'd rather throw, if you'd rather landfill it than recycle it, that's up to you. You could still do that in your home. If, if you know that, you know, that, that, that putting that, that bottle or can, I was reaching for a bottle or can, but you don't actually put this in there. But if, if you know that bottle or can is actually gonna cost us more, putting it in the blue bag, you can put it in the brown bag. But if you value what it means to recycle these things, then you still put it in the blue bag, even though we gotta pay more. So if, it is my hope that we pass this this evening. It is my hope that, 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 uh, that, that we lead better than the city of Cleveland has uh, on the issue. I think we've been upfront with our residents in letting them know that, you know, this is something that, that costs. What I've heard from residents has been that we should be going ahead and paying for this, not that we should end, not that we should end it. Uh, perhaps you've heard differently. This is what I'm hearing from folks when, when I talk to them. So I'm hopeful that, that, that people will support this. I'm hopeful that people have spoken against it. We'll, we'll think one more time before they vote and, and, and will support recycling and support this motion. So, uh, so that's what I have to say about it. If, if, happy though to give back the floor to anybody who wants to talk further. We are having discussion here. So, Mr. Rock.
Just more of a question about procedure. Does this have to be on emergency? Because being that it, it sounds contentious, it may not pass on emergency.
Yeah, I'm concerned about that too. And, and, you know, we did have also, it was listed originally on, on the agenda in duplicate as letter M and letter N. M being an ordinance, N being a motion. An ordinance is, is one way of doing it. A motion's another way of doing it. If it's an ordinance on emergency, then, then yeah, you need five to pass. If it's simply a motion, I think a simple majority will do. Mr. McConville, uh, can you weigh in, please?
That's correct. Uh, council would have to, you know, modify their agenda at this point um, to, to do it that way. But, you know, one of the quirks of our charter is that we allow uh, passage of contracts by motion and the motions require uh, an affirmative vote of four.
Okay.
But there's not a time constraint in which this has to be answered or passed this week, correct? If we did, then that.
Well, the, the, here's the thing, if, if it's by, well, I'm sorry, Mr. McConville, why don't you weigh in on?
Well, I was gonna say that if the, if the uh, I guess if you called a question, then, then you, you know, it could be voted down. But if the rules were not suspended, if, if there were not enough votes to suspend the rules, you would go on to second reading.
Oh, okay.
But also alternatively, we could amend the agenda and simply make a motion rather than considering the ordinance. Is that correct?
You, you could. It's council's agenda. They're allowed to change their agenda during the course of a meeting. I mean, it's a little unusual, but yes, technically you can do that procedurally.
Yeah, very good. This is why she, yeah, you raised your hand to be recognized. You have the floor.
I'm just having, I'm just having a problem that this is a legislative issue and that the mayor is weighing in on how to change the agenda.
Oh, I chair the meeting. So, you know, this is uh, going over procedure would be prerogative of the chair.
Uh, to the law director or the mayor, are you saying we, we have this on the agenda twice already? Once is an ordinance and once is a motion? Or are you saying, Law Director, that we have to amend what we're doing because we have the ordinance on? I'm a little confused now, so I apologize.
The, the ordinance was published, I'm sorry, the agenda was published with the ordinance and with a motion. And I indicated um, to the mayor that that was duplicative, that you needed one or the other. You did not need both. Um, and as I've said many times before, my preference as a best practice is to pass things by ordinance. Um, notwithstanding the fact that our charter allows for motion. So the um, in response to my comment that those um, items were duplicative, I think the motions were deleted in an amended agenda. And so what the mayor, I think what the mayor is suggesting is that uh, rather than consider the ordinance, there would be a vote by council to amend their agenda and to add the motion back onto the agenda. Because the voting requirements for the motion differ from those for the ordinance. And, and what I'm saying is that if the question's called, the vote will decide the matter. Um, but i- if you don't suspend the rules, either because you don't have the votes or because the motion is withdrawn, then you would be on second reading at your next meeting on this ordinance, in which case a simple majority vote would um, rule the day.
But do we have to pass it now? Is that why it's on emergency?
Well, the contract's going to expire at the end of the month.
Okay.
So, you know, in theory, I suppose, i- if it, if it, if it passed at the next meeting, it would become law within third, in, in thirty days, well, thirty days from. it would become law within third in thirty days, well, thirty days from passage.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Remember, there's a difference between emergency and suspension. Suspension is a suspension of the two reading rule that's required by charter. You cannot have an instance of suspension without emergency. So if you suspend, you're enacting on emergency by definition, by necessity. However, you can also enact on emergency without suspending. You can go through your two readings, pass on emergency after your second reading, in which case the ordinance becomes immediately effective.
But you're saying the second
Clearly.
Yeah, the second reading on emergency can pass with a simple majority.
Correct.
I'm not in favor of making this a motion personally. I feel like we've got it on as an ordinance. I mean, I would like to see it pass. I've spoken in favor of this, but I don't want to play that. I don't want to do that kind of thing. It's on our agenda and I'd prefer to leave it that way personally. I don't know what others think. If you, others.
I agree with that. Well, we're going to vote on the suspension of rules, so we'll we'll know where that stands.
Right. If the suspension of rules does not pass, then we don't proceed with the second vote. Instead, this is treated as first reading and it's back on the agenda for the next meeting.
And remind me, the suspension of rules requires a super majority of five?
Correct.
Call the question.
All right.
Did you call Justin?
The question, Mrs. Purdy also called the question, Mr. Gould.
Justin, yeah.
Yes, and, you know, so the question has been called. We will take up to two votes. We'll see how the first one goes. And the first one is on the suspension of the rules.
One one thing, Mayor, just looking at the charter, I misspoke on one item, which is that if it's passed on emergency, whether it's after a suspension of the rules or after two readings.
It has to be passed how?
It has to be, any emergency ordinance, whether the rules are suspended or not, requires a two-thirds majority vote. So you would you would be needing five votes to pass the ordinance on emergency.
All right. Well, then, that's what I thought. So it seems to me, then, the consequence of 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 not passing this tonight or passing it next time means it'll be thirty days. If it if it passes not on emergency at the next meeting, then it'll be thirty days before it's law. And thus thirty days before the mayor can enter into the contract, which means we'll be well into the month of October and out of contract on recycling. So no recycling will happen. We'll be throwing away every one of those blue bags for for those first three or four weeks of October, or we'll just be piling them up where the leaves normally go.
There's not a continuance on that last contract, a month to month.
The the contract ends at the end of the month. So.
Mayor, there might not be recycling next month at all. I don't know. We're about to find out.
Was the question called?
It was. We should probably vote unless there are more questions on process.
We should. We should. If there's no further questions about order and process, the question has been called, has been pointed out. We should then proceed with up to two votes, the first being a vote on the suspension of the rule. So, Mrs. Thomas, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Blingfield.
I'm still confused and I apologize. And I apologize.
I am totally confused, too. You are taking me.
I'd like Luke, I'd like Luke to clarify for us. If we suspend the rules, give it, give us, give us both scenarios.
Okay. You can suspend the rules, which requires five votes. That will call the question. In order to pass on emergency, you will need five votes to pass. So a four-three vote means that the measure does not pass and it is disposed of on your agenda. Or you can vote not to suspend, in which case the matter will appear on the agenda at your next meeting for second reading, but it's still on emergency. So you again will need five votes to pass. And I think if you don't get the five votes, you're I mean, that's actually a question I would have to look at. What if it's four-three after your suspension?
Well, I think what you do then is, is if you is is Yeah, I mean, if it's four-three after suspension, I don't believe that passes.
Why is it on emergency on the second reading if it's going to take thirty days anyway? Why is it just on reading and then it takes thirty days?
It wouldn't take thirty days.
Take thirty days.
Would not take thirty days.
So I suppose you could move, in that instance, if you didn't think you had enough to pass it on emergency, to simply move to adopt, wait thirty days, sign, and we just have no recycling in the city of University Heights for the first, you know, two-thirds of October.
So, Mr. McConville, on the matter of procedure, if I vote no on the suspension of the rules, then this will not go to a vote for emergency tonight and we pass to second reading to later this month. Is that accurate?
That's accurate as long as there are at least two other members who vote no. You know, so a four-three vote in favor of suspension is not sufficient. You need a minimum of five votes to suspend. And so a four-three vote or less means that it just goes on to your next agenda on second reading.
Correct. Thank you.
That's, I would want to take a quick look at that, but I think the way that that would work is that if if the question is called on emergency, then you need five votes, even though you're on second reading, because the impact of the emergency is to make it immediately effective. And the question would be, what would happen if you had a four-three vote on your second reading? Does that mean that the measure goes into effect after thirty days? I think the answer is probably yes, but I want to clarify that.
Well, that's something I, it would seem that's something we would be able to clarify between now and the next meeting. And what we do here doesn't necessarily affect that as long as it advances to the next meeting.
Correct.
All right. So it would seem to answer the procedural question, if three vote no, or three or more vote no on the suspension of the rules, that we don't take the second vote, it simply moves on to the next agenda on second reading.
Correct.
Okay. Have all points of order been have all questions regarding the points of order and the procedure been satisfied at this point?
No, I'm still confused. I'm only kidding. Thank you very much, Mr. McConville.
I'll put together a brief memo for all council members that just walks through the distinction between suspension and adoption.
Thank you.
Very good. Very good. Well, the question has been called and we will take up to two votes, depending on the outcome of the first one. And the first vote is on the suspension of the rules. Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Blingfield.
No.
Mrs. Berry.
Yes.
Mrs. Purdy.
No, for suspending the rules, correct?
No, see, I'm confused. I don't know how I'm voting. I, because I'm voting for recycling, so I don't know what, I'm totally confused.
May I suggest that your your vote would be yes, Councilwoman Party, if on the suspension? Because if you got suspension, then you would be able to vote. But I just, I I will be voting no, but I just would suggest that if that was your position, that you wanted to vote tonight and move on to the second vote, that you'd vote yes.
On the other hand, Mrs. Purdy, if you wanted to ensure that we didn't take the second vote, because
That's what I want to ensure. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I vote no. Thank you.
Miss Berry?
Yes. I'm for recycling. You are telling me what I'm supposed to do to to make that happen? Because I am totally
I would, I would suggest to you as legal counsel for for council, for city council, that your your best chance for a potential adoption of the recycling is to vote no on the suspension so that the matter goes on second reading at the next meeting and politics can play out over the next, you know, two-week period and who knows what will happen.
Thank you.
So I I think that if you want to reconsider, have your vote reconsidered, you should
I want it to be reconsidered to to go the way you told me I should go. So that recycling can happen if I vote, when I vote that way. If that makes sense.
Berry, are you changing your vote from a yes to a no?
Yes, that's what I'm doing.
Okay. Mrs. Berry, and so your vote is now a no.
Thank you.
Mrs. Weiss. I'm sorry, Mrs. Weiss. Mr. Erdel?
No.
Mr. Rock?
Say no on this suspension of rules.
Mr. Gould?
No.
Okay, very good. The the motion to suspend the rules and will not proceed with a motion to consider the matter on emergency. This is now treated as a first reading and it will appear on the agenda of the next regular city council meeting. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is item O, a motion for authorization to bid the twenty-twenty dash one citywide fall tree planting program contract. Mr. McCorney, you have the floor, sir.
Mayor, does that mean, then, wait, you went from M to O? Is N then, don't we have to table N?
And N was deleted on the amended agenda. If you haven't amended
Deleted one. I am so sorry. I must be working from an old agenda. I apologize. Sorry. Go ahead.
Yes. So, yeah, yeah, item N was deleted on the amended agenda, which was why, that's the matter I brought up earlier. If we had added N back, could we consider it as a motion instead? That that's not what we're doing. So
Going live on my agenda, so sorry, too many things.
Too many agendas.
Very good. So we are now on item O, which is a motion for authorization to bid the twenty-twenty dash one citywide fall tree planting program contract. And, Mr. McCorney, you now have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mayor. This is our annual citywide fall planting program. It usually follows the program that we have next, which is our tree pruning and removal program. And this program is being suggested to do exactly that. So it's our annual planning program for trees on public properties, which are the tree lawns, medians and other public properties. This year's program is going to concentrate in zone two, which, as I was commenting, is the area we did pruning and removals last year. So it's going to be the northeastern section of town, starting with Bain Tree, Sillsby, Groveland, and working our way south back to Fairmont. We pruned all the way to East Carroll last year. So we'll be planting those sites where we removed trees from last year. The proposed contract will have approximately a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and twenty trees, I'm sorry, and an estimated cost of forty-five thousand dollars. So funding will come from the Tree Improvement Fund, which was discussed briefly earlier this evening. And I'm requesting council's authorization to advertise and bid this project.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McCorney. Are there any questions for Mr. McCorney?
Can I say something, just to just to clarify? The cost of this program will actually not be applied to the the expenditures that we're going to be making this year out of the budget. This is out of a fund that exists and takes care of itself. Yes?
Would you like to respond to that? I, it will be coming out of the Tree Improvement Fund, which is one of the items that were earlier put on the agenda for assessment across the city. And those funds go into the Tree Improvement Fund, two oh five four four zero seven five five two four zero, which can only be spent on tree maintenance.
It's a special assessment fund, right?
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I think that clears that up. Any further questions? Is there a motion then for authorization to bid the twenty-twenty dash one citywide fall tree planting program contract?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Very good. Motion by Mrs. Purdy. Is there a second? Is that a second? Yes, second by Mr. Erdel. Any discussion? Mrs. Weiss.
I think our tree program is fabulous. I know that we have a special fund and assessments go there. I think pruning is essential. You don't want unsafe trees to be in the city. But even though it's a special fund, it is cash at the same time that would have to be utilized. So I just, you know, it's I think, I don't know, I guess I just want to make a statement that even if we we go out for bid and and we do this, it's, even though the the month, the fund has money, if we actually utilize it, it's our cash that's that's utilized. So there, you know, there is a, we just have to differentiate between those two things. That's all.
Right. Going out to bid does not require that we actually accept any of the bids. That happened with earlier this year, and we can cross that bridge when we come to it. At this point, I would urge that we go ahead with bids and then we can make a decision if we want to accept one. But thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Are there any further comments or questions? All right, seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blingfield.
Hi.
Mrs. Berry.
Hi.
Mrs. Purdy.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Erdel.
Hi.
Mr. Rock.
Hi.
Mr. Gould.
Hi.
Okay, very good. Motion carries. Next is item P, motion for authorization to bid the twenty-twenty dash two tree pruning and removal contract. Mr. McCorney, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Mayor. This is our tree pruning program for public properties. Covers pruning and removal of trees that are considered dangerous and or have other issues with them, such as ash trees that may be infected with Emerald Ash Core. Our focus this year is going to be on areas that haven't been done in the past seven years. So it's a little sporadic in its location. It won't be all in one zone. It will have approximately six hundred trees to be pruned and or removed. And we're estimating the cost to be about one hundred thousand dollars, which will come again from the tree fund. I attached a map of the streets that we intend to do and the areas we intend to do. So we're going to be looking at trees in Walter Stinson Community Park on sections of North Cliff, Charney, Traymore, Saybrook, Fenwood, down to Hillbrook and the section of Hillbrook down to Meadowbrook, and then Bushnell, the large oak trees that we have on Bushnell between Warrensville Center and Renford and South Bell, far from Cedar down to Fairmont. and South Bell, far from Cedar, down to Fairmont. And I'm recommending that we go out to bid, and I will bring the results of those bids back to council.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Corney. Any questions for Mr. Corney? There are no questions. Is there a motion for authorization to bid the 2020 dash two tree pruning and removal contract?
Don't move, Mayor.
Very good. Motion by Mr. Rock. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Purdy. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfield?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Purdy?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Goode?
Hi.
Very good. Motion carries. Next is item Q, motion to accept radiological instrumentation from the Ohio Emergency Management Agency, OEMA. The receiving and the calibration of one Loveloom 26 dash three high range frisker and five pocket dosimeters. I understand Chief Perko, I see, is on the line via phone. Chief Perko, if you're able to unmute, you have the floor. Mrs. Thomas, could you try to unmute the chief? It may be that we need to unmute him.
Which number is he?
Two, one, six, three, one, four, seventeen, eighty-seven. Do you see it?
Yeah. All I can do is request that he unmute.
I see. Okay.
I can send him a text message.
There he is. He just unmuted. Very good.
There we go.
Chief.
Good evening, Mayor.
Yay.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So the motion to accept the radiological equipment, this is a program that's managed by the Ohio Emergency Management for radiological equipment. We have had a meter detector for approximately 20 years that was offered by the county. This was also funded for calibration in which a few years back, approximately, going back three to five years now, was unable to be calibrated due to its age. The county knew that a lot of the fleet they had in the county was aging. Fortunately, they were se, able to secure funding with the Ohio Emergency Management Agency. And so that funding provided one of these meters for each municipality in the county. The meters valued approximately $1,000 and the the management agency is going to fund calibration annually, which will be controlled by the county. So these meters will replace the outdated meter, and it'll be used in the field for detecting different types of radiological alpha, beta, and gamma rays. And then along with it, there will be no cost for any maintenance that's required due to calibration issues in the future.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Corney. Or excuse me, Mr. Chief Perko. Still on the last item. Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief Perko? Okay, I'm not seeing anything. Is there a, a motion to accept the radiological instrumentation with an item Q?
Don't move.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Blankfield, motion by Mrs. Weiss. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfield?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Purdy?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Goode?
Hi.
Very good. Thank you. Motion carries. We are then on to item I, motion authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding, MOU, with Cuyahoga County for the permanent transfer of ownership of one 3 CDV 750 Charger in direct reading dosimeters. Chief Perko, you once again have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, this agreement was reviewed by the Law Director. Same agreement that the county used for all the municipalities receiving this equipment and just states that they will be releasing one of these detection devices to us, along with the five dosimeters, and will also provide the annual calibration with any necessary equipment needed to fulfill that. And then that will be for the life of the meter.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Chief Perko. Any questions for Chief Perko? Questions or comments? Oh, I want to thank the chief. So, thank you. Is there no old, or sorry, motion for authorization for the mayor to enter into an MOU with Cuyahoga County has set forth in item R for the Loveloom 26.3 Charger and the dosimeters.
Don't move, Mayor.
Very good. Motion by Mrs. Blankfield. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Purdy. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfield?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Purdy?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss? Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Goode?
Hi.
Very good. Motion carries. We are now on to item S. Motion to hold an executive session immediately following the regular meeting for the purpose of discussing personnel, legal, and/or real estate matters. We do have a real estate matter to discuss with regard to University Square. We do have legal slash personnel matters to discuss with respect to getting an update from our Labor Council on Union Negotiations. Is there a motion to hold executive sessions on those matters?
So, second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Erdel, second by Mr. Rock. Mrs. Tom, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfield?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Purdy?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Goode?
Hi.
Very good. We will hold an executive session at the end of the regular meeting. We now turn to Director's Reports Finance. Mr. Kennedy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items briefly, working on closing out the month of August. Should have that done probably midweek next week. Big priority right now is to get, you know, the city has about 4,500 parcels. Council approved those assessments this evening, so I want to make sure, that's got to get filed with the county by Monday. So I'm going through pretty much parcel by parcel to make sure that the rates that are applied and the footage is calculated correctly. So that's going to take pretty much the majority of my time until Monday, when that gets filed. And other than that, I just want to say thanks for approving those items, particularly appropriations in the gas contract and the assessments this evening.
Very. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any questions for Mr. Kennedy? All right, seeing none, we will proceed to the Director of Law, Mr. McConville.
Mayor, given the executive sessions, I'll go ahead and deliver my report during the executive session.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McConville. Public Safety, Police, Chief Rogers, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one item to briefly report on. Our office of community policing is looking at implementing a monthly coffee with a cup type community engagement event to be done virtually during the pandemic. So more information on that will be available in the, in the near future. And that is all I have to report this time.
Very good. Rogers. Public Safety, Chief Perko, are you still online? If you would unmute, please. If you have a report.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, since we met before the break, just tracking things related to the pandemic and our response needs, PPE for the city. We did do the large bulk order that you had approved back, I believe in June. That has been fulfilled and our PPE supply is adequate at this time for the entire city here. Also have started a behavioral health program within the department to offer different resources to our members should they need to seek them out. And then I know you also approved application for various grants late in the spring, early summer. Some of those are starting to trickle in now, so probably at the next meeting, I'll be able to bring some of those to you for your vote to accept them. And that is all I have to report.
Very good. Thank you, Chief Perko. Any questions for Chief Perko? Okay, seeing none. Service, Mr. Corney.
Thank you, Mayor. In response to the flooding issues that were raised due to the rains we had on Labor Day, Monday, the Service Department will be working on approximately 50 different locations that had complained about flooding. So we're locating the tees and checking the sewers to make sure there are no issues. In addition to that, we are continuing our cleaning and TVing of mainline sewers and will be concentrating in any area ongoing of the 50 homes. We currently have completed about 16 of them, I believe. That will go on for the next two weeks or so before that gets completed. Second item is the list of road repairs for patches and curb drains and catch basins. We will be working on that list as well. I heard council's issue earlier of wanting to get that done before winter, and nobody wants to get that done more than I do. So we will be working on that to have that done before winter as well. And that's my report.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Corney. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Corney? All right. Next is building, and I will be giving a report on behalf of the Building Department this evening. Since mid-April, we have not had a full-time building commissioner or director level employee of the Building Department or of the Housing and Community Development Department. I have been managing these departments directly, not only to manage and oversee, but to do a deep dive in the works of these departments. The essential functions of certified building officials, after an initial stint by Nino Monaco, have been done on a contract basis with our retired former building commissioner, James McReynolds, and with Howard Sonnenstein. Our housing inspectors have continued the rental registration program, the modified point-of-sale program, exteriors only through the emergency, and we resumed the exterior maintenance program. The essential work of the departments has continued. Plans are reviewed, inspections are performed, and the work is done timely. Working with Mr. McReynolds and with administrative assistants Ruth Griswold and Dee Dallas, administration has developed and issued a recommended update to the schedule of fees for building. There has not been an update since Burl Rothschild was mayor. The current fees do not reflect the costs of the services actually provided. The proposed update does a much better job of recapturing the cost of service. This recommendation was provided to the Chair of the Council's Building and Housing Committee Councilwoman Barbara Blankfeld, as well as to all members of council. I believe that was on August 31st. I would ask that these fees be enacted to take effect by the first of the year, if not sooner. I am preparing and will be issuing a report reorganizing the Building Department and Housing and Community Development Department into a single Department of Community Development, overseen by a single director level employee with three divisions, a building division, a housing division, and a planning division, together with an organizational chart of employee responsibilities among the divisions. I have been working closely with the personnel in those departments, not only to oversee the essential work of the departments, but to prepare them for the changes that will be coming. A particular interest to much of the public, and among those changes that is in the works and will soon be deployed in beta form, will be to move the ordering of special pickups that are from our Building Department and onto our website. Historically, the fee has been collected by the Building Department because, unlike the Service Department, there has been a counter open to the public for accepting payments for permits and fees. And because our inspector needed to be able to check on orders of special pickups to know whether to tag items left on tree lawns. Due to COVID-19, we have not had that physical counter open. Payments have been left in the slot of the Building Department House or in the City Hall mailbox and processed from there. With the new system under development, the special pickup will be ordered on our website with a description of the items to be picked up, paid for by credit or debit card, and the information transmitted simultaneously to three departments: service, to perform the pickup, community development, to let the housing inspectors know if a special pickup order is pending at an address before tagging a rug, a rubbish pile, and finance, in order to reconcile the payments. At the next meeting, I will announce a date by which we expect the new service to go live. This concludes my report on behalf of these departments, both building and housing and community development. Does anybody have any questions for me with regard to this report or its contents?
Well, thank you. Thank you for getting the special pickup online, getting that together again. That's been in the works for a million years.
Yeah, well, I would like to thank Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Guyman as well, who's our web guy, as well as Mr. Corney and, and Ruth Endy in the Building Department for, for all their work in making sure that we are ready for that transition. It is, if Dracys can accept a credit card for a pizza, then surely we can accept for a special pickup. So I know I've used that before, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep using it. All right, thank you. Next then, if there's nothing further, is City Engineer, Mr. Chuni.
One brief report this evening, Mayor, is the Laurelhurst Waterline Project is ongoing. They completed the main line today. The entire water line is in all the way from East Carroll down to University Parkway. They have to do the tie-ins at University Parkway and Summerfield. That'll be completed by the end of the week. After that, as you know, the water line has to clean, chlorinate and flush for several days, passing three tests in a row before we can hook the houses up. So we probably got a week in there where it happened. So then the flushing of the main, then they start hooking up the houses. I anticipate it'd be done by the middle of October.
Okay.
In the report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Chuni? All right, seeing none. We'll proceed to Communications and Civic Engagement. Mr. Cook?
Good evening, everyone. We have 20 days and two hours and three minutes until the end of the census count. The good news is that we are already ahead of where we were in 2010. So far, we have an exactly a 74% response rate. It's up from 71.5% in 2010. Of course, 2010, we didn't have to deal with a pandemic. We didn't have to deal with all the John Carroll students disappearing right as the census was starting. And while, you know, some are back in town, you know, obviously, JCU isn't in session in person, and they won't be for the semester, but we're going to try to chase them around a little bit more, but to get them to participate. But we're going to try and make up what we're losing in college student numbers and even stress more reaching out to people who rent in university heights. And that's not just, you know, renting a house, but people who live in the apartment complexes. So we'll get that number up higher and we'll have a, a strong push to the end and get us as, I don't think as high as we've ever been in the history of the census in, in our city.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Cook. I want to thank you for your, for your work on this. I know that you know, in spite of the pandemic, we've actually increased our numbers from the last census. And, and I am hopeful that in spite of the estimates that, that have shown a dwindling population, you know, knowing what we know on the ground about the number of families that have been moving into the city, I, I, I hope that we are in for a pleasant surprise when we get our numbers. I appreciate that we're, you know, renters have continued to be historically an undercounted number and, 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 you know, any efforts that we can to shore up the renter response. We'll run this up for the next 10 years. I mean, all this Carazak money, every, you know, which is just one example, but, but, but so much funding that is available, made available to the city, they looked at that number, and that number controls what we get. And every additional person counted are dollars for the city. So, you know, anything you can do, remind your friends, remind your neighbors, you know, you gotta respond to this. You gotta respond to the census. Nothing in the census will be used against you. If you got, you know, we have a three unrelated residents rule in the city. If you got six unrelated residents in your house and you tell the Census Bureau, we'll never know about it because only the census knows about that. If you're not paying your. Because only the census knows about that. If you're not paying your taxes, Rita doesn't hear about it. The IRS doesn't hear about it. Only the census knows where you are and who you are and what you're doing. So don't worry about being persecuted or pursued by any other branch or agency of government. Just respond to the census and be counted. It helps the city. Please do it.
Thank you. So what I'm gonna do, thank you, Mayor, what I'm gonna do now is, you know, I've talked to some of you about it. I'm gonna send you a link to the census response map. So they update about every other day, so you can see where the numbers are and where they are in the four census tracts in the city. So again, I'll say in the email, I'll say now, if you have any questions on how that works, just shoot me an email, give me a call, and I'll walk you through it. Thank you.
Just to add to that, that these maps do not provide granular data. The federal government does not give that to us. We are not able to say this house hasn't responded. Let's knock on that door. They do have people that are knocking on doors in the community. We've talked, we've spoken with at least one of them. So we know that we have somebody here doing that. And, you know, I wish him well. I wish him expediency, and I hope he counts a lot of people. So Larry, go get him. All right. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Cook? All right. Then we will go on to economic development. Mrs. Drucker could not be here this evening, but I have a report from her, so I will read it now. Any of the eyes are hers. So below is my report for council for the September nine council meeting. Number one, the first version of the RFP for the comprehensive zoning code has been drafted and will be ready to review by the Economic Development Committee at their next meeting. Two, BR Canes is moving forward with their developments. The House on Northwood has been sold and is currently under construction. The property located at three five zero five Tullamore has been sold and permits were picked up on eight thirty-one. Construction on that site will begin by month's end. As a reminder, the resident meeting for this property was held on June twenty-fifth, 2020. Canes is completing a set of drawings to submit to ARB for the South Green Lot. The developer is also in the process of working with their outside architects on a set of drawings for the South Taylor Residential attached site. Once those are completed, they will begin the approval process with the city. Number three, Domus Construction purchased the property at four four nine nine Groveland. The plan is to demolish the existing home and build two new homes. The builder will need to submit plans for a lot consolidation and lot split. When this item is placed on either the council or the planning commission agenda, council will want to ensure surrounding property owners are notified of the proposed development per the notification provisions. This is not a CIC project and therefore will fall under the council holding, and therefore will fall under council holding the resident meeting. Number four, I have drafted a small business assistance program, and Brendan Zach has drafted a rental assistance program, a mortgage assistance program, and a utility assistance program to be implemented as part of the CARES Act funds received by the city. Upon review from the mayor and law director, these programs will be on the September twenty-first council agenda. Number five, the plans for the parking lot improvements to two one one five South Taylor, which is the former KFC site, were approved contingent upon the approval of the easement by the city. Of course, well, you do that last part because we did address that earlier this meeting. But this concludes the report of the Economic Development Director. Kelly, I will make sure I forward this to you as well as the building department and mayor's reports for your ease for the minutes. Next then is, oh, well, housing community development, I already gave that report. So we now go to council committee reports, building and housing chair, Councilwoman Barbara Blankfeld. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So the building and housing committee has met a few times over the summer break and will meet again in the month of September. We continue to review for preparation for council's consideration at a future meeting, a review of codified ordinance section twelve eighty point ten on rental registrations, section twelve eighty point eleven A nine on occupied regulated apartment structure. And as you had mentioned, a review of the building department permit fees. So those have been discussed over the summer break and will be discussed again at a meeting later this month. Also, we're delighted to hear you say that the long-awaited organizational structure or reorganization of the building and housing department will be made public soon. We've all been talking about that. I know that's been in the works, and we've asked for that a couple of times, so it'll be glad to see how that's all shaking out. We appreciate that.
Very good. I look forward to speaking with you at length about the proposal. Thank you, Mrs. Blankfeld. Next then is community outreach. Councilwoman Susan Pardee.
No report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Economic Development Councilman John Rock. Mr. Rock.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance, Vice Mayor Michelle Weiss.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. There is a strategic planning committee meeting, which is a subcommittee of the finance committee, planned for the next couple of weeks. I forget the exact date. This will be a probably six-to-twelve month project where a strategic plan for the city, short-term and long-term, will be developed in October. I hope to start budget meetings. We're gonna get that on the calendar. You know, we, we hope to get it done in December. Last year, unfortunately, it was passed in March, which is totally legal, but we didn't have enough data at that point. So the goal is to have the budget passed by December, so we will start that in October. And just want to say, I am so glad that credit cards will be coming to University Heights for backyard pickup. I have pushed this for, I don't know how many years already, and our residents will appreciate that also.
Yes, you're welcome, Mrs. Weiss. And, you know, I was thanking people for getting this done. I omitted Mrs. Weiss because I will tell you that she's emailed me and contacted me about this. And there were a couple of times when I got an email that said, you know, Mayor, I think now is a great time to do this. I thought, you gotta be kidding. Now is not, no, actually, you're right. Now is a great time. Go ahead and do this. And I sat down, you know, with Dennis and with Mark and everyone said, hey, you know, we gotta do this thing. It's about time. And with the pandemic, it's especially time. You know, we got people coming up here and putting checks in mailboxes. And, you know, that works, but this'll work better. It really will for everybody. So I'm excited about it, too. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Oh, and I have that finance subcommittee strategic plan meeting for the fifteenth Tuesday at seven PM. So that's what I have. Is that a joint meeting with the Citizens Finance Committee? Or is that, I have none clear?
It's a separate meeting. There's only a few participants that are gonna be on the committee. And then, of course, the public meeting.
Well, sure. Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you. Recreation, Philip Erdl, Mr. Erdl, Councilman Erdl, go to the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. No report.
Very good. Thank you. Safety, Councilwoman Sondra Berry, Mrs. Berry.
I believe you put it in your report, and I don't really have anything to add to that.
Okay. I will add, you know, working on that with you, with this group of citizens, has been one of the more rewarding things I've gotten to do as mayor. So I'm glad we've gotten to do this, and I'm really looking forward to next week's presentation in two weeks. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Service and utilities, Justin Gould, Mr. Gould, Councilman, you have the floor. Councilman.
Mayor, I think, I think council, Vice Mayor Weiss misspoke a moment ago when she said credit cards are coming for backyard trash pickup. That, in fact, is not one of our plans for the service committee meeting. But I'm grateful that they're coming for special pickups. You know, you heard the results of the meeting that we had for recycling and that review. I believe, Kelly, do we have that published yet on the seventeenth? Coming up shortly, we'll be having one of the first public hearings to hear citizen input regarding the solid waste study that we had. You know, council had received the study. We finalized that report. We have a finalized report to review and have published that. And I think it's important now to hear from citizens and hear their input on this solid waste study. There are certain provisions that are outlined here. There are certain potential options that are outlined there from keeping things the way that they are to changing to automated pickup with in-house service, and finally, an option to change to automated pickup with a contract service, without an in-house service. So I think all of those will be up for discussion and citizen input about the direction that we want the city to go. I think that there's some options that are cost-saving options, and then there's also going to be a balance of service and expectation. So we'll have that coming up, Mayor, and that's the end of my report.
Very good. Very good. Did you say that you were looking at having this meeting on the seventeenth?
I believe so. Kelly polled numbers and has the results of those, so I don't think it's been published yet, but.
I thought you were holding off on that.
Holding off on?
The citizen portion.
No.
Okay. Well, let's get that cleared up then.
Okay, so.
So the seventeenth at, I assume, seven o'clock or?
I don't know the date. I just, I know that Kelly was doing a poll and had a date that was available to all committee members.
Okay. Well, let's get that firmed up here, you know.
I'll check.
Okay, yeah. Kelly, if you would check and then get that out to all council members, because we'll want to make sure. We know there'll be a lot of interest, and we're gonna want to make sure people are aware of it.
And this is, Mayor, I anticipate this being one of several hearings. So if somebody does not have the opportunity to join next time, there certainly, I do not intend this to be going with a suggestion from from my committee to council to consider at the next council meeting. I anticipate this being a process of various views and inputs from citizens over a period of time.
Okay, very good. Then we'll anticipate that the seventeenth, some similar date, will be the first of multiple. Okay. Excellent. Excellent. Okay, we will now go to Committee of the Hall, Vice Mayor Michelle Weiss. Do you have a report? I'm, I can't hear you.
No report, Mayor.
Okay, very good. All right. Well, we have now concluded the regular portion of our agenda and our reports. We did move to go into an executive session for the update on labor and for University Square. Labor Negotiation, this is our update. I have messaged our legal counsel for labor to let him know. Meeting, I do not anticipate that there will be any motions or votes following the executive session. So while members of the public are welcome to stay on. Yeah, while they are welcome to stay on, while we go into a break room to do our executive sessions, I do not anticipate that there'll be any further business other than a motion to adjourn. So that said, if you are not still here when we come back, have a good evening. We will see you presumably at one of the committee meetings. We're at the next regular meeting scheduled for September twenty-first at seven PM. That's Monday, the twenty-first. So if there's nothing further, I know Kelly will probably stay here, organize the break rooms and send us over to discuss. We'll probably discuss University Square. Here comes Jeremy. So why don't we get Jeremy, why don't we do the executive session first?
Who do you want me to have as host or co-host? I can't do it because I can't bring you back in because I won't know when you're ending.
Oh, I see. All right. Why don't, you can make me the co-host. That's fine. And then I will send us on to executive session.
I have to go in fifteen minutes.
We'll make this, this should be fairly short, so.
I made you co-host.
Okay. I am the cook, and yet I don't seem to have the.
Need to be host, maybe?
Yeah, let's try making me the host.
And then you'll just have to bring it back.
Ah, there it is. Okay, breakout rooms. All right. So.
Now I'll need you to end the recording, too, since you're a host.
Oh, right. All right. I will pause the recording. So I will pause and then give me one moment, and I will read people to the breakout room. We should have an invitation.
You're muted.
We're all muted. There we go.
All right, all right. So we're back and we are recording. And is there a motion to return to regular session?
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Blankfield, a second by Mrs. Partey to return to regular session. Mrs. Thomas, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Blankfield?
Hi.
Mrs. Beery?
Hi.
Mrs. Partey?
Hi.
They're muted, Phil. I think I saw them affirmative eye there.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Goode?
Hi.
All right, we are back on regular session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Phil moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Erdl, second by Mrs. Partey. There's no discussion. Mrs. Thomas, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Blankfield?
Hi.
Mrs. Beery?
Hi.
Mrs. Partey?
Hi.
Ms. Wise? Mr. Erdl?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Goode?
Hi.
We're adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Night, everybody.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Kelly.
You're welcome. Have a good night.